Hi.
This is not the norm, I apologize. I mean, it's the norm for me running in here at the last. But Lincoln, Lincoln, sit. Lincoln, sit down on your table.
It's all coming, you better say.
Hey. My favorite. No.
Maybe you just.
If you just think life happens.
Life happens, yep.
Like I said, I was like, oh, it is actually Thursday and I had softball practice, so she can't stay with the. That's great. Okay, okay. Um, I guess do we first want to start with the appointment of a.
I think that's, yeah.
Did everybody get my email?
Yes.
This morning about Nancy?
Yeah, yep.
She decided that she wanted to withdraw.
Okay.
So.
I looked, but I didn't see it.
I talked, so I talked to her Tuesday after I sent the email. Maybe I see the email money, I don't know, my days are all messed up, guys. Um, but I talked to her on the phone, she was trying to call me back, she was calling the wrong number. She had flicked, she had the last numbers, um, and so we finally got in touch with each other. And initially she said, yeah, you'll keep my name in, but then this morning she looked at me and said, that's over to you, I would just rather you not consider me for that position, so. That works. Understood and appreciated her consideration in the first place and.
Thanks for being.
Thank you.
Be honest about it.
Being honest about it, yeah.
So, is this a special meeting tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
So what all can we talk about?
The city council appointment.
Okay.
By.
Ornesses.
Central Square and Jeff.
Correct.
Position.
Yes.
City Superintendent.
Okay, okay. Perfect. I'm gonna give one hundred percent on us, I don't know we're hitting that one.
That's fine.
Yeah, everything else, that's on there.
Well, probably, there's other stuff that needs more importance.
And Jack has practice at seven, so I kinda need a little bit like to intel.
Yep. Okay, so if you guys, um, I mean, I can make an appointment, you guys can approve it, or you can tell me what you're thinking.
Go for it.
I mean, after reading, um, all of the things and, and everything, I was gonna, um, appoint Jesse to the, Jesse Oswald to the open seat. So, if you guys root that.
So do we have to vote too?
Roll call?
I roll call.
Yep.
Do you want to second it?
Nope, she just appointed, she appointed, we need to vote on.
Okay, so we just vote.
We're just gonna do a roll call. Okay, so Jenna?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know that it matters, but Andrew had said that would be the way he went, but, um, so the motion passes, Jesse, you are. Are new. Take your seat at this table. You accept it? Do you, uh, do you accept it?
I accept.
Okay.
Katie's about was straight across from me, but you can sit wherever.
I'll just take it.
Like normally we're past it.
Okay.
You're the lawyer.
You're good.
I'm Kathy Martin, I haven't met you.
Yeah, I'm Jesse Oswald, I'm Mitch's Mitch Oswald.
I don't know them either.
Hayden Cliff Oswald?
She's not from.
She's not from here.
Oh, well, then you really don't know.
Yeah.
Mitch is a teacher at the high school.
Okay.
Did you say I belong to Mitch?
I'm not originally from here.
Okay.
Do you know me?
Cheryl.
Do I have a? Does she have your email address?
Uh, do you know?
No, I don't think so.
Yes, Jesse, J E S S I. Dot Oswald, seven eight.
Perfect. Only thing I know that you'll have to do is go to the county office, the clerk, to do all of the things you guys did when you first signed up. The statement of substantial interest, things like that.
Okay.
She'll need to fill out a W.
Or.
Or W.
Um, I got you a code of ordinances already, and these are the last few meetings, if you want to take a look through them.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all it is.
Okay, perfect.
Square.
Um, I'm gonna wait until your substantial interest is done.
Okay.
I don't know what you guys.
Just always heard about one of those thirty days white readers.
I can look.
You don't have to do it right now, I just, for next time.
Perfect.
So can she vote on anything that?
Yes. Pat's on here. And so I don't know, but I'm gonna say yes, because she was appointed, you guys confirmed.
We voted on it the first time we were appointed, so, you know, we were sworn in.
Yeah, we were sworn in.
Yeah. So you want me swearing real quick?
I don't know.
We'll do it, well, just to make sure.
And then if we have to redo it, we can redo it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed when she, yeah, this isn't the official copy, cause I assumed where she goes to sign.
Yeah, if we, I, yeah, let's swear her in.
Okay. So what, swear, uh, stand up, face the flag, hand over heart, which you guys do?
That how you jump on one foot?
We just had to stand.
Stand up.
I think we just had to raise our right.
Yeah, raise our right hand. Repeat after me, I, Jesse Oswald.
I, Jesse Oswald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the states.
And of the state.
Uh, and faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of city council.
And, and the duties of city council.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Yep, welcome. Uh, today's a special meeting, so there is no agenda.
Okay.
Um, yeah. But now that I have your email address, I'll attach you to all of the things.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll update the websites tomorrow. To show it's. Um, your email address will be on there, but only, it will say only mail. But when they click on, on it, it will send it to your email, but it won't show what it added.
Oh, okay.
The website looks nice.
Yeah, it does look nice.
Um, and you can have one of those graphs.
Where do you guys wanna start? Do you wanna do some? Okay. No, it's not, you go sit back and timeout right now. Go sit, thank you. Uh, so this is the quote that Adam was emailed today for that, um, add-on.
The total is the one thousand fifty degrees?
Yeah.
And then it'll be twenty eighteen fifty per year.
Do we need to keep that part?
No, no, cause that would be, that's the one that is for.
Transforming it in.
So maybe for until the books are all tidied up, maybe.
I would say we'd have to have it for at least a year, maybe.
Maybe two.
Two. Just in so we can make sure everything's gotten migrated over.
Here's my problem with it, where, what was our initial payment for it? Fifty-four?
Oh, you mean this?
The initial.
For Central Square.
For Central Square, what we paid already.
Gotcha. I think it was, it was seven thousand, like eighty or something, we're around there.
So we've paid that. Are we still have a program that's not working, that is not used, that is not? Um, now they want twenty-two hundred dollars in addition for ten hours of instruction.
Oh, that's real.
So we can get to a point where we can work the system, and now we're looking at another thousand dollars to make it be able to import.
So we're gonna be at ten.
The data. And then are we even, that's a minimum.
And then we don't even know if it'll work.
So Jesse, a little background, our G-Works program that we had, we had to go live, they say, and then we lost a bunch of information. G-Works had, couldn't provide no help to get us the information, like to finish our books to do an audit.
Really?
And so.
And that's why the bills were messed up.
For so, for that long.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we're looking at this new company, and now, like, they're not really being.
Up front, they're not being up front.
Yeah, so we're in a predicament, you know?
Central Square seems to have to nickel and dime for everything that they do. Uh, we're still having issues with G-Works, multiple issues, um, thankfully, uh, Lisa was able to get October's bank reconcile in twenty twenty-four, but it's because, uh, of duplicate numbers in there that we had to sort through and try to figure out. So it had duplicated like twenty-one thousand dollars that was just there, and it's like six cents, eight dollars.
And so it's just not a blank, like, it's not like, these three things were duplicated, it's like, this was, this was, this over here, this one.
Yeah. And so we spent, I think she spent two days with Christina on the phone trying to figure it out this week. But she finally got October.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and she's working on November. But, and then move-ins with, uh, G-Works is a nightmare. Um, he called today and I talked with him for about an hour trying to move in a new person, their class to an address, and, uh, we went through all the steps, everything worked until you hit submit, and then it just says failed.
That's on the water billing?
Yeah.
Wow, so frustrating.
Yeah, so until we're able to move him in, he won't be able to, like, receive a bill, or any, we won't be able to charge water. So we're trying to figure out how to do things like that.
So I don't have to be a manual read then?
Yeah.
Is that G-Works? Can't just not bill somebody.
Yeah, we gotta have a billing on it.
Or at least be sending out the minimum. And then, maybe what we could do is do a, like, um, move-in read.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And then fill at least the minimum, and once we get his account going, actual read, and then he's gonna have to pay the difference, I can't imagine, is it just him that's living there?
I believe so, I'm not.
I can't imagine that would be, you know what I mean?
I'm sure it's like.
A lot of money.
Yeah, cause that, I mean, that could be something to, for, for at least charging the account. Yeah. Or, like, that might just have to be a manual bill that's sent out.
Yeah.
So, when Great Wisdom came the other day, like, how did that go?
Well, and, but he needed this doc, he, he, well, it didn't go well.
No.
It, it went, well, to a point where he got in to try to look and see how he could migrate in from G-Works into Central Square. That's whenever this problem came up, that we would have had to have this module in, in Central Square before he could migrate anything over from G-Works into Central Square. You can do it, he, I asked him today, he said, you can do it, but this is time-wise, this is the best way to do it, because otherwise it's going to be very lengthy process, and this one will be, they can just, it'll go like a data dump.
Yes, I'm just like, I'm buying the loan that you have to pay extra.
I, I don't, I'm with you on that.
Or a chat tool that will let you import data.
I didn't understand that either, that part of it.
But they know you have to have.
Yeah, like.
Well, that's like whenever he said they're nickel and diamond, that's part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When they sent the original quote, it was without the consulting services and management, project management services, and did I send you that?
Yeah, but I was like, what is, what are consulting services and product management services, like, what are those charges?
So I asked them, and it is just for their service department to activate it and make sure that it works.
Geez. So like.
I mean, it might be building a plugin, but building plugins is not hard, it's not five hundred and forty dollars hard.
Well, this, it sounds like this is one of their modules that they already have in place, and it's just that much to active, you know?
Right.
I mean, the software programs, the changes they've been through, they're expensive as heck.
Yeah.
Very, cause they do, they just add on and add on.
Yeah.
But, like, this seems, to me, it would seem like you shouldn't have to buy that one.
Not, not till the start there. That to me is just.
I kind of, that's a function you have to have, with any system to import it in.
A month of manual data entry, and you hope you don't make a mistake.
You forget something or something.
I'm in favor of trying to see if we can just get our money back from them, pulling completely out of them and either sticking with G-Works.
Jake, Jake said.
QuickBooks.
Jake said QuickBooks.
Jake was a, a, I don't wanna say he was a pusher of it, but he was kinda a richer. But, and, and he was very upfront about it.
Familiar with it.
But, like, I'm not telling you it's the greatest program, and I'm not telling you it's gonna be a fix-all, because it's not going to be. We all know that QuickBooks Online has their downfalls, but what you can do for that is, you can Google it. You can look up on YouTube, you can go to Reddit, you can, he's like, there's so many resources out there that are free, so like, when there's an issue with G-Works, the only option they have is just submit a work ticket.
And hope that they read it.
Yeah.
And respond.
Cause there's no.
No accountability, there's no other resources, there's no.
Google it, but you're not gonna get a answer, you're not gonna find.
They don't have the familiar area on, on media, social media.
And he said that's the problem with, like, these very specific softwares.
Um, G-Works got back to me today on tickets that we submitted almost two months ago.
Hey, gosh.
But it sounds like maybe they're trying to figure some stuff, maybe they're getting stuff figured out, but.
I think it's cause I logged a ticket every day this week.
Okay, good job, though, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that shouldn't have to work that way.
So.
One thing, the one thing we have to keep in mind, if we do choose to go back to QuickBooks online, they do not do water billing, we would have to buy a separate program to do water billing.
So we stopped using QuickBooks when?
Twenty tw- like.
Twenty-two, no, twenty-three, twenty.
Twenty, I would say spring of twenty-three.
Yeah. Twenty-three.
Right?
They went to, they went to G-Works in twenty-three.
But I feel like it was like March or April, it wasn't the beginning of the year.
Janet was the one that, was the one that went in it, and she's like, I think they did, like, you're right, it was March.
I don't think it was right at the beginning. Do you know?
I didn't remember it was twenty-three, cause that's.
Well, Deb came to work in twenty-three in March. February, and they had just started putting it in.
So is that where we can get the, QuickBooks doesn't allow us to be able to pay the bills online, right? That was kind of the bigger push to get the G-Works.
It doesn't, it's, well, and there's no utility billing.
Okay.
So we're having to find a separate utility billing.
Cause prior, they were using QuickBooks and the RoBRED. Um, I can't reme- I don't know exactly why they went from that to G-Works, but I'm assuming it's probably cause it was an all-in-one system, where everything is just through G-Works, they don't have to go to QuickBooks to type in what RoBRED is telling them, things like that.
Well, I think originally what they, why they went was because that's when Janet took it over. Or no, way back up, she was on QuickBooks, and then they switched to QuickBooks Online. And it was, it's kind of, the system was kind of screwed up already, and then when they went online with QuickBooks Online, they got even more screwed up. So then they went back to G-Works. It got screwed up again, because they went from eleven funds to four funds, and they embedded, she wanted to embed everything in the funds, which you can't do, and that screwed G-Works up pretty bad. And then whenever G-Works went live, that even screwed it up worse.
Yeah. Boys.
So. I mean, if we wanna go back, I, I, you know, I'm with, we gotta do something, cause we have never, this one we haven't even used.
No.
So, we have every right in the world to get our money back on it.
So, another, um, Wes Lerner said in Valley, they use G-Works.
Yeah, G-Works, they're having problems with G-Works in Horton, are they not?
Uh, yeah, so they're moving away, I believe they just went live, cause I got, I'm on the city clerks and municipal finance officers.
Oh, yeah.
And Destiny just sends out, uh, an email asking, how do I find misinformation? Yeah, and I believe that they just went live more recently.
I've heard that Horton's having a hard, really hard time.
Yeah, Horton was looking to move away from it, because they wanted to go live, they pushed it off, but their meter reading software depended on G-Works, but if G-Works didn't go live, then they lose the contract with their meter reading, and they couldn't go to a different one, they've had a whole lot of issues out there.
Is it Neptune?
Neptune is our meter.
It is ours, but not theirs.
Yeah, Neptune is our meter reader?
Yeah, Neptune three sixty, we originally got.
A lot of money to renew that program, too.
We originally got the three names from Neptune, it was Central Square, Jay Hoff.
Yeah.
And Tyler Technologies, we never heard back from Tyler Tech, Jay Hoff was eighteen thousand dollars. And Central Square.
Maybe they set it all up, maybe they just did all of it for you, though.
No, no, I haven't seen the software company that does that.
May, maybe they're, they're small and mobile.
Yeah. Ship them in for a weekend, fix our stuff.
Well, I mean, we gotta get something.
Feeling though, if we are considering separating from the software, we just stay away from the municipality type software, it's like, no matter what, what you do or where you turn to, this is, these are the problems you're gonna run into.
I think we either stick with what we have with
G-Works.
G-Works, or like, yeah, what you say, just completely.
Well, and, but the problem is with that, and this is what Jake was saying too, is like, you know, when these softwares are initially developed, you might have where you can pick up the phone and you can call the person, you can probably get their extension, and, but then they keep getting bought by these bigger companies, and bigger companies, and bigger companies, and they just, you know, slowly but surely, they kind of cut out that customer service part of it to where you're at the point where the only way you can talk to anybody about a problem is to submit a work ticket, and then you're essentially at their mercy, cause they don't have a timeline to get back to you.
Does Neptune have the utility bill payment?
No, just reading.
They read it so you can send that data into a.
Yeah, it was just their reading.
Like, this one says, go beyond basic meter reading and billing to give your utility essentials and data for faster, more informed decisions, Neptune three six, Neptune three sixty meter data management platform is designed for the needs of water utilities.
But if we take it, if we go to QuickBooks, we are gonna have to buy a water billing program. And then somebody mentioned one, I can't remember what, what it was, but somebody did mention.
Yeah, what, what I remember with, from, um, Jake saying is to contact Robinson and see what they use for their utility billing.
Yeah, because they use QuickBooks.
They use, but, but he, there was another city that uses QuickBooks too, but I didn't.
I'll ask him.
I don't remember what city it was.
I'll send him an email, I'm asking, so we can maybe get with them to get some reference. But the problem that we got is, we've got to do something, because I found out some interesting, interesting information this week, and I'm not really excited about it. Um, and the information I found out is, is that, you know, we were supposed to have a year-end treasure report and financial statement sent to Kansas. Every ci- every city in Kansas has to do that, at the end of the year, you have to have one on file, we do not have one on. What I had found out is, is that Kansas can, if they want to, they can come in and start looking at all of our books, and looking at all of our financial status, and looking at all of our, the whole thing, and they can unincorporate you fit really, pretty quickly. And if they do that, then what happens is, Atchison County Commissioners take over running F A. So, and that came from someone who's been through that whole scenario. So, I don't want that to happen to us. So I'm not sure, I mean, we have got to be able to find a way to get, the, at least get the end of the year financial statement, and we have to have that for budgeting purposes anyhow. So we've got to find a way to get that information out of G-Works, and get it to Kansas, and then you have it for our budget.
Yeah, she is working on it, that's the bank reconciliation, cause we were looking at the treasurer's report, and it's broken down to our streets.
Yeah, and you have to have your budget amount, and you gotta have beginning balance, receipts, re expenses, and ending balance.
Without G-Works being balanced.
Right.
We can't get those numbers, and so.
Right, but I'm just saying, we, that's why we, the importance lies on that, because we do not want to stay in here.
Yeah. But.
No way.
I think, you said she may be done next week, it might be the week after, but she is working on it.
Well, surely there's something there that we can file an extension, just like our audits.
Yeah, cause, like, cause it's not our fault, it's the.
No, it's the software's fault, but I'm just saying, we.
Right, but I mean, in order to try to stay in compliance, maybe there is some sort of person we can talk to and explain.
We may need to call down there and talk to.
Our case, like.
Treasurers.
This is what happened, I'm, I'm sure we're not the only municipality.
Well, no, they have, it happens to others.
Kind of like that's had the software issues, because it sounded like before Christina started with us, she was correcting some stuff from another city that was using G-Works that had kind of the same thing when they rolled. And that's what I was told.
So maybe that's how she needed to look for that kind of stuff.
Good event.
I can reach out to, uh, to Pika and figure out if there's an extension, who's in charge, where even we sent it.
Yeah, I would imagine it would be the, trying to think where it would go, Department of Revenue, or? I don't even know.
This is a question, is her at the league?
Maybe a question for the league, call them and find out, just tell them the situation. I mean, and they'll, they'll let us know.
I wonder about, like, Lancaster uses for utility payment system?
I mean.
I know nobody, Dan.
We, I mean, we do not want Atchison County coming in here, no.
So I vote, we're, I, I wanna, I think we should talk to Pat next meeting about X D and R, we know. Next week, right?
Yeah.
No, two weeks.
Two weeks. Fourteen.
Fourteen. So I think, then, I mean, I really do honestly think if we did something like that, we got, just said, hey, Central Square, you're out. And then we go to, to QuickBooks or whatever, QuickBooks Online, I think that Jake's group could help us a lot.
Yeah.
And get in there and get to working on it, and get it set up, so that we've got some kind of functioning software program that you guys can use, and make your job a whole lot easier.
Cause the utility billing part is the easiest part of it, just addresses meter numbers, just fine detail things. But the, the financials is the, that we don't want to mess up.
Well, and I, I think honestly that them being able to pay online or getting it automatically deducted, like, doing auto pays was a huge reason, I think, that they went to G-Works, it's because it was a system that's by all-in-one that they could actually probably get all that done.
How many people use the online payment?
I can tell you.
Quite a few?
I used to, until they screwed it up, and then.
Mine still goes through. I'm still using it.
I went, like, they did the partial payment, I put it off auto pay, then they still do payment, and then I like completely deleted all my information out of there.
I could try to look, but I, there's no report for it through G-Works, so I'd have to go through each records account, that's let's say, I'd say probably more than fifty, we send out two hundred-ish postcards. Yeah, so about fifty-ish.
Right, so this might be like going back to old time, but work. So like, if you don't have, like, the auto pay available, like, how could we do our own utility bills, like, could we have the meters read? Pull that from a, to a spreadsheet, and then like export it, and like, to print on like labels, you put the label on a postcard and send? Like, could we, could we like process the?
Go back to the old-fashioned way now.
You know what I mean?
Like, we, I've got a postcard ever since I've lived in.
Well, that's what I was saying, like, what, how did they do it before G-Works?
Yeah.
Like, I just wonder, I remember, I, I mean, I've lived here since two thousand thirteen, and I've gotten, we've gotten postcards since I moved here.
Download, like, the usage for the month, have it calculated in a spreadsheet, and then just export those to print on label, you can put the labels on a, you know, like, we could have somebody make postcards from the city.
Yeah, I think the issues begin to arise on, uh, how to print the postcards, you know, how to make the la- You know, how to make the labels, how much, you know, cause I don't have a list of addresses on labels currently. So that's something I'd have to create. Postcards, we don't have a thing where, like G Works has it set up. We'd have to create our own postcard in order.
Like a template.
That.
You could do that on Canbach.
Yeah.
And then we could put it to Port Richards and like, or you could buy thousands, you know, bulk.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you could get like a decent sized label.
And then it's.
Why don't we get a little bit of information about what we were using before G Works, just because it was all printed on the postcard.
Yeah, we were using thoroughbred. That was the.
They were using in combination with QuickBooks, right?
I believe so, yeah.
And was it strictly the online bill paid?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, when they changed.
I think online was part of.
Part of it, but like Janet couldn't get quick or she couldn't get it understood.
Well, and I think they also sold him a thing about like, oh, look, you'll have, you'll be able to have a website with this and you'll be able to. Your people will be able, I think it probably was a little bit of that too.
It's like.
I'm imagining.
It's like Jake told us. It's like Jake told us that, um, he said, uh. You can't. They come in and they show you this fine bill materials and everything is all hunky dory and we can do this, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this. But then when it comes down to realistic terms, what their salespeople are telling you is not what the developers have developed.
Right.
So therefore you're getting sold an effective bill material.
Not like this.
This thoroughbred is from Topeka.
Yeah.
That's Topeka.
I didn't really know that we're looking into can pay currently for people to pay in office. But I think it has a portal as well where they maybe want to pay.
Okay.
I don't know for sure. I have a demo on that.
Does our website have an ability to?
G Works or, yes, so if you go to our website, it says, uh, utility payments, you click on that and it takes you to the G Works website.
Can you develop, can they develop a separate utility page for us to be able to pay on?
Probably.
Who?
Just our website.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, there's more than one way to, to work around this.
Why don't we, I mean, if we can find some comfort, some cities that have QuickBooks and they have other. Utility things, why can't we have, get them to make some phone calls? I'll call or I'll email Jake. And tell him that we are in need of knowing some of the cities that he works with QuickBooks on right now and cities that have a separate billing for their water or sewer. And then have him get ahold of you and, you know, give you all the information on those. And if you wanna make a phone call to him and stuff and say, hey. What, how your, how's this process work? So, cause he said he knew, uh, I don't know, two or three other cities that had that.
Yeah.
So. And if he's already been down that road with those guys, then. That'd be a good source for us. So I'll I'll send him out an email. I'll get it out.
We, so what are, what are we doing with Central Square?
Right now, if you guys don't wanna make a motion, we can just like table and have a good basis for discussion when our community is here. I think that if we can get our money back, we need to get our money back and throw this away.
Is that something like Adam could call and be like, okay, we wanna get out of this contract? What do we need to do?
I guess you can talk to, you mean to talk to him pri- prior to the meeting?
Yeah, that way like maybe the next meeting, we can like make a decision like, this is what it's gonna take to get out of it.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Oh.
Call Pat.
Central Square, call Pat.
Call Pat.
Call Central Square. Like if Adam can call Central Square.
Well, I think Adam should call Pat and find out what he, we need to do. Cause we don't wanna like pull the trigger and.
Well, they have a breach of contract right now. I I, my thinking is, is they're a breach of contract right now.
That's always G Works and.
Well, he, Pat originally said we couldn't do anything with G Works.
Yeah.
But I think we can't. I think, you know, I personally, I think we can't, cause they're a breach of contract also.
I think we need to have a conversation with.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that we're not doing anything. Cause I don't want it. In case we do have to go ahead and go forward with them, I don't want it to be like.
Adversarial. Adversarial commitment relationship.
Even just like to know what are our options at this point, like we, there's, there's nothing. We don't have anything. Adam is spent hours trying to, you know, get it going, walking their videos.
Well, we've been since what, January?
At least it has too.
Four months and we still don't have anything to work on.
Yeah.
So that's, in my opinion, that's.
Yeah.
That's a major breach of contract right there.
I think we need to talk. So. That's a joke between Wade and I when we're trying to do something like, oh yeah, for another two seventy five, you can get, if there's like. Two grand.
Twenty seven fifty. Five, I think, five or five twenty five.
No, like three seventy five. An hour?
I don't know. We have to look back on the contract. We have a copy of his contract.
I can look.
We should have a contract.
I believe.
We should.
I've seen it when I'm flipping through old minutes, but I've never read it.
We should look at this contract. Well, with seventy dollars for a. That one you looked at that one time, wouldn't it be seventy dollars for an email?
Seventy dollars for just one email?
Yeah.
That's why I'm like, I would think you could just call them and ask them, hey, what is, and then we could take that information back. It's part of lawyer fee.
But I'm saying to not have a lawyer fee right up front.
You know, like if Adam could get some information.
Information, like I was agreeing with Jenna, I think that would be. I don't know. I would just call me like, hey.
Or we could just talk to them at the meeting.
If you would know.
It's prolonging things.
It is, but we're, what, we're already two more weeks. We've been in five, four months. So.
Yeah.
Just wait till the next meeting and have him check it out.
Cause I'm sure he'll want to read the contract we have with them currently. And then he'll ask questions like he did with G Works. Send me how many tickets you've submitted, send me whatever information we have. Then he'll go into that.
You have all your emails you've sent to him, right? Table it, leave it at that?
Yeah. Yeah, that brings some.
What's the next topic?
I think Jess was this, I don't even remember what I was gonna say. It was just the city council appointment, Central Square and.
And ordinances.
Ordinances. And Jess.
Already got one?
Well, should, do we need to go into executive session?
We can, cause it's not elected personnel.
Yeah.
Yep, let's do that. I make a motion going through executive session to discuss non-elected personnel. For like. Ten minutes? And if we need to come back out.
Yeah, so like.
Here's my motion.
Let's do fifteen.
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes.
Everyone, council, mayor. All in favor? Any opposed?
For ten.
Okay, back into regular meeting. No motions were made during the executive session.
I make, I make a motion, we go extend the, or go back into executive session to discuss non-elected official personnel. For ten more minutes.
Have a second. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They were in recess. Back into regular session. No motions or actions were taken during executive session. So I think we should, like, kind of maybe wait to see if we get more applicants in. Um, if we get applicants in, can we, is it?
Oh, you're asking, yeah. No, so this one I received today and I knew, yeah, and so I didn't send it out, but yeah, if somebody. I also put on the K R W A website, the posting. It'll drop off in two weeks and if we don't have anyone, I can just put it back on. But that gets sent to every city that has water. So.
We could find, cause we could find somebody from, you know, I know we said thirty, within thirty minutes. We could find somebody outside of, you know, the Effingham area.
Yeah.
I think there's more people out there that are certified water and sewer than we realize.
What did we put for a starting pay?
Twenty, didn't we?
I think so, twenty negotiable experience. And then what else to add? What, I just wanna make sure that we, uh. What are we doing with Valley?
I'm calling last Sunday morning.
And then, um. And I take Max his key, so we have them to do what he needs to do on Saturday and Sunday.
Yes. Yes.
How long will you be here tomorrow?
Until, great. I'm only wondering, cause like, we can take him his keys and he can do what he needs to do for the weekend. What's he gonna do during the week? Do you guys want him tracking that? How do you?
We need him to mow for sure.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what he's doing. At least with like Jeff, he'd come in and say, oh, I'm gonna go check this or do that.
Well, I mean, if we set up a schedule for him, why couldn't we set up a schedule for him and say, no, mon- uh, Monday, you're gonna mow this. And then the Monday, Tuesday, you're gonna mow this, cause it's gonna take him a while to mow around here. You know, mowing is the big thing right now. It's keeping it under control, cause you don't want to get out of control. So maybe Monday, you mow the park. You know, and you maybe have in, you know, have a timing to do this. Are we gonna hire him full time, part time? That's the other question.
He'll only have to be part time right now until school's over.
So part time, so maybe he does one, you know, like park one day and then the next day he does. You know, that that other area, well, he could do the other area across the street, but he does the park. But I don't know what, and then we have to mow around the shop and they have to mow out at the lagoon, the dump.
And he did tell me, he said, he need that, I know everywhere that needs to be mowed. So.
He did a great job mowing last year.
I'd be more than happy to like sit down with him tomorrow and be like, okay, like this is, like, can you check?
You already might know, like this is what needs to be done.
Just, just make out like, make out a schedule for him or something, so you have some structure for him.
Or even if he makes a schedule and.
Yeah.
Turns it in then, but, um, yeah, I can give you these kids. I just. Wanted all the ducks in a row before.
Yeah.
He needs to fill out his paperwork as far as like, any paperwork that we have for him to be hired, or is he still on as a city? Oh, he's still, yeah.
So if I say, Max, can you check the water every day until you hear differently?
Well, but if we're gonna have Valley Falls. Okay.
And I'm sure they would come and do it if they needed.
I know that there are certain water tests that they will have to come and do.
Yeah.
But I don't know what the.
That's like monthly, maybe, or even quarterly.
And we could have Max do it, if he knows how to do it.
But if he's not certified, he's.
But no, 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 not.
So I can just say like, Max, can you do the rounds? Like, do you know how to document it, whatever? Every day until you hear differently.
Yeah, turn it into.
Yeah.
Add them, yeah.
And then like mow, like, okay, like let's get a little mowing schedule here. Do you know where the mower is? Do you know where the gas, the oil? Where do they get gas? Is there a gas tank down there?
No, they're gonna have to get gas up at the co-op.
Okay, so probably need.
It's putting, we have an account up there, don't we?
I think so, cause I see charges to Jackson Farmers. I just know, like usually it's a co-op card, right?
Yeah.
For the change.
Well, I think they just go in there.
Yeah, you gotta go in there and charge it to the city. Cause anytime Jeff would be here, it's probably co-op hours.
Right, I just know like mom and daddy's have a co-op card.
Yeah, we have a co-op card.
Yeah.
But you can still go in there and be like, charge it to the account or whatever.
But he's not coming in until evening.
Well, that's the problem, because they're also not open on the weekends, co-op isn't. So there probably does need to be a card somewhere.
Or. Well, tank full of gas.
Well, yeah, you let her, you give them, get, get a tank full of gas and put it down there and he can just.
But, or if they have a charge account, can we get them a co-op card?
That's what I'm saying, you could just request another card. Yeah, cause we don't. Because it's only a, uh. It's only until he gets out of school that he's not gonna be able to go there during business hours, you know.
I'm sure any issues that he runs into, he'll also ask now.
He seems like he has pretty good head on shoulders.
I'm glad we have him.
Yes, he's gonna be an asset. It's kinda funny, cause I'll have to tell you later, but.
I was very pleased with his work last year, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Like everybody was.
Yeah, I let him know. I said, call him, I said, you're doing a good job.
He came to my house and looked very polite, my husband said, so.
Yeah.
Helped us out, do some stuff. Questionable.
Good.
Yeah, okay.
To, well, on the ordinance, do we wanna talk about, I just, I have one little thing on the ordinances, like kinda went through on the sewer ordinance. You know, we've been talking about the school rate. Yeah, I kinda did a little bit of analysis on it. Hopefully I'm down, going down the right path here, but, um. Looking at the paperwork that Adam was kind enough to get for us. Whenever they increased it from five fifty to nine twenty nine, or to whatever, yeah, as nice as nine twenty nine on here, but I know. It's a different figure other than that. Um, they had on the back page, he said that Eckler moved to increase the sewer charges for the schools by fifty percent. Her second to motion, motion carried. So they actually did vote on it to take it from five fifty and increase it by fifty percent. Okay, so that's how that got in, increased.
So there's no reason why, but there's, but there's no.
No reason on another's, but then I went back and I looked on all these numbers that you gave us, all the information. Went back for the very first one and it's usually they're going up like. There's, you know, the, the, um. The residential rate went up, but if you look at the residential rate, like I'm looking at the one here. That's two thousand twelve, oh one, two top, twenty, uh, twenty twelve, oh one. And it, if you look at the residential rate versus what the schools getting charged, the residential rate is three point eight percent of what the schools gonna charge. Okay, and that's pretty well standard all the way through this. So, but whenever you look at the rates that the school is going up. It went, oh, I have it here somewhere. I went through and figured it all up. I mean, it's like.
You're saying the residential amounts have increased about three point eight percent every time?
Hmm, roughly.
Yeah, it's kind of been a standard increase.
But no, well, one, there's sometimes it didn't, because there's one time it went to, let's see, this is the first one. The first one, the rate was, um, the residential rate was. Go on here somewhere. It's like five or six dollars. And then it went to nine dollars. And then it went to. No, it was six twenty five back up. It was six twenty five, then it went to nine dollars. And then it went to. Fifteen, I believe. And then it went to twenty six, fifty six. So it's jumping. You know, and they had that thing where they were increasing it by three percent, right? But the increase on the school rate increased higher. In la- in large percentage than the residential rates did. So, but anyhow, then I went back and I looked and I said, okay, if we took, we talked about some kind of compromise on this thing. So if we went back and we said, okay, if we go from the nine twenty nine they're being charged right now to the five fifty, that they were charged back in, what, twelve? Two thousand twelve, I believe, or something like that.
Just that, this is the high.
This is just the high school. I'm just talking high school.
Just the high school pays nine hundred and twenty nine dollars in sewer per month, per month.
Per month, yeah.
Which is outrageous.
And sixty one cents.
Yeah, they were in twelve, in twelve, twenty twelve, they were at five fifty, five hundred and fifty dollars a month, just for the junior slash senior high school. So if we went back to that rate. Correct, you're, that's a reduction of three hundred and seventy nine dollars a month. But that's also three hundred and seventy nine dollars a month revenue that the city of Effingham is losing out on. So if we wanted to recompensate, re- compensate for that. So if we wanted to recompensate, recompensate for that. And to get that money, that level back up. Then we're looking at if we have two hundred and eighty-two meters, which the school has five meters, I believe, five or six. If you look at. There's eight, okay, well, I figured on two hundred and if you look at the three seventy-nine divided by two hundred and eighty-two meters, is what we have total. You're looking at a dollar thirty-four per meter per month. That we would have to increase by to capture that. And this is just for the high school. We would have to do the same thing with the junior high in the.
But those other ones aren't gonna be reduced.
As much, no.
I do, I do feel like when it's where the bus barn at least could go to just a commercial. Rate. Because there's no reason they're paying a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month in sewer, when they're only using two gallons a month in water.
Well, the other one that's a significant one is is the elementary school building. So, and that one was whenever it, this was five fifty, it was. It was, yeah, it was four fifty also.
Seven ninety-five.
No, it was, yeah, it was at five fifty. It was at five fifty, they were both the same. Back then, they're not the same now. But they're both, they were both the same back then, at five fifty. So if we took them both back. I don't get that either, but they didn't.
Yeah.
So then you'd have to figure out the same thing on it, which would be maybe like a dollar twenty-five cents or something like that a meter. You're looking at about two. Two fifty a meter, it's rough figures, rough figures. Make up the difference. So that we aren't out that much money.
But then here in the next couple of years, we're gonna have ten new.
Agreed.
Meters. I don't think that would actually be like necessarily taken into the consideration, but like we know that's coming down the line, like.
I would think the duplexes should have their own.
I think they, I think in a meeting, he said they were gonna have one for duplex.
There can be up to twenty residences over there if it's at full capacity and full. They're not developing everything there, but it's plotted out for twenty spots, for twenty. Including the duplexes and then individual homes.
That field?
Yeah.
Really?
On George Street North.
Yeah.
So we are going to have to. A journey, we won't have forum, sorry.
And our next meeting is the fourteenth. See you guys.
But I'm just saying, I mean, this is what we have to look at to be able just to maintain what we currently have. And, I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, the way our service system is, there is no way that we were able to, we'd be able to take a hit going down. I mean. We're just, we're just.
Understand that, like, so understand that, but I'm also like, you cannot expect one.
That's what I'm saying, we could.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take that down.
I I also don't want to raise the rates and make people more angry and, but that, you know. If our water funds are looking a little bit more flush than our sewer funds, like maybe we brought Peter to pay Paul. A little bit, you know what I mean, and massage those numbers some.
Adjust them a little bit.
So we're still getting the same money.
The more it's going into.
But more of it's going into sewer. Does that make sense? Or e- even if we increase it two dollars and fifty cents a month? So we can. Make things a little bit more fair, like I don't, I don't think that's. Horrid.
No, I don't either. But because I mean, I, we just can't, we can't take, you know, if you're talking about four hundred dollars a month. Yeah, that's a lot of money for this city to hit on.
And we're still down that whole month that we didn't get to bill for.
It's unfortunate that there wasn't, you, the, you, the past councils hadn't taken the sewer things into consideration.
It's very unfortunate and they, because they put us in a bad.
Fund was set up and never followed through.
Because we would have had almost seven hundred thousand dollars in that. If it'd been funded correctly. And we would have had a lot of money, but we don't.
And also if the answer wasn't like, let's just throw it on the school, and if it would have been done responsible, responsibly. Back then.
Well, in the, in this, in this meeting, and here, I'm looking at this and it says um. It said increasing water and sewer rates were discussed. As directed, the city clerk had prepared cost comparisons showing the current sewer charges for the schools, the amounts we are allowed to charge the schools. Where's that at? And a twenty-five percent and fifty percent increase above the current charges for schools, for the schools. And then after I I read that one line, he moved it by fifty percent. The amounts charged to the schools will be distributed more closely to the number of students and staff at each center. Water and sewer rates charged to all other customers were also considered. Wagamuth moved to increase water and sewer rates for customers inside the city limits by twenty-five percent. And to increase water rates for the customers outside the city by fifty percent. Wagamuth seconded the motion, or Eckert was seconded the motion, the motion carried announced. So increases in water and sewer rates will be set forth in ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh three.
What year was that then?
This was done in. Was done in eighteen.
I was gonna say, I wonder what year you got everybody merged, the juniors even high, I thought maybe that had something to do with it, but it was before that.
Literally, I have read through the minutes and it, it seems like. They realized, oh goodness, we are gonna be short, this school is a huge consumer, like let's just start targeting the. X, Y, Z number, and I I can understand the per person thing. But I also don't, because if you have one health care, well, then your per person rate is whatever our minimum sewer hookup is. Know what it is right now.
Well.
You know what I mean?
What I was told, whenever I dug into it, when before I even became on the council was, is they had to set the rate. For the customers, for the citizens, for the, you know, household residential, at thirty dollars per person or per meter. For household, because they would not be considered for grants if they were anything under that. Because at the time, they were at like twenty, I believe at twenty-five or something like that. And then they had to be at thirty or over.
And the water had to be at fifty.
Yeah. That's what I was told.
Yeah.
But then whenever what's my call came in to do our thing, he said, Roger, he said we were really good.
Yeah.
That's the budget, but.
Well, yeah, but he said, I mean, like. You're doing well, you are definitely would be qualified for grants and stuff.
But we can't get them. I mean, we applied for that one and didn't get it for the sewer.
Have we heard anything about that grant writer that came in? Oh, can't talk about that, sorry.
But I just wanted to bring that up.
No, I.
Because I just, I just went kind of through them just. Calculations and I'll do the, I'll do the same calculations for the elementary school. For the middle school and see what I come up with. And I'll talk about it in the, in the fourteenth meeting. Yeah. I'll make emotionally move during the meeting.
Well, great, I have a second, you second. All in favor? Meeting in during.